Good evening and thank you for joining Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Beta Pi Omega Chapter for this important event, Your Ballot Decision 2020 with City of Little Rock Chief Education Officer Dr. Jay Barth. I am Katrina Owa, President of the legendary Beta Pi Omega Chapter. To our community leaders, guests, and members of Alpha Kappa Alpha, thank you for joining us on this evening. I would like to also recognize the elected officials in Beta Pi Omega Chapter. We have Ms. Tawana Byrd, who was elected as Circuit Court Judge, State Representative Jamie Scott, and State Representative Joyce Springer. When we go to the polls, whether in person or by mail this November, there's plenty at stake. And tonight, our discussion will center on our school board. For the first time in more than five years, Little Rock residents will cast a vote for the school board. We hope this hour is insightful, provides clarity about your options in the school board election, and that you gain an understanding you can share with family and friends. This event is being recorded so that we can share via social media and our website, betapiomega.com at a later date. So let's go ahead and dive in. Dr. Jay Barth was appointed as the City of Little Rock's Chief Education Officer in 2019 by Mayor Frank Scott Jr. He's the Ima Graves Peace Emeritus Professor of Politics at Hendrix College, where he was a member of the Department of Politics from 1994 through 2019. From 2012 to 2019, Commissioner Barth was a member of the Arkansas State Board of Education and served as Chair of the Board for two years. As Little Rock's inaugural Chief Education Officer, Dr. Barth coordinates the city's work to support education from birth through higher education, with a particular focus on implementing the community schools model in collaboration with the Little Rock School District. Dr. Barth, thank you so much for joining us on this evening, and the floor is all yours.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate being here tonight. Thank you so much for having me. This is a great group of folks, and I'm honored to be here. So my task tonight is really to really kind of think about how we got to this place, a time when every seat on the school board is up in one election, a bit about what's going to happen on November 3, and soon thereafter. And then, I think importantly, a bit of conversation about what do we do to make this new endeavor with local governance in the schools make it work. And I think that all of us have a real responsibility moving forward to be sure that this is a successful return to local control. So, as many of you remember, some of you, I think, were in the room that day, on January 28 night 2015, so just over five years ago, the State Board of Education, in a five to four vote, voted to remove the entire Little Rock School Board at that time, immediately. And those seven members of the school board, therefore, lost their offices. And even more importantly, I think, the people of the Little Rock School District lost a voice on an ongoing basis in the governance of their schools. And I think we all know this has been a very taxing period for the residents of Little Rock in terms of not having a real voice in the education of our public school students. Over that period, of course, a lot of other changes happened. The Fair Dismissal Act was removed for Little Rock's teachers. The Little Rock Education Association, by the state board action, is no longer recognized as the negotiating entity for the teachers. We had a variety, we had schools that have closed, a variety of other things. Now, along the way, of course, there was a community advisory board, a seven-member board that was created to serve as a liaison between the people of the district and the leaders of the district. But that entity, the community advisory board, is by statute limited in terms of its powers. And so this is going to be clearly a big step as Little Rock gets a school board back. Now, in the debate and conversation about the return to local control, what the school district was, quote, "reconstituted" by the State Board of Education. And therefore, in giving power back to a school board, the State Board of Education placed some limitations on that school board once it is elected and trained, in that there are certain, what are known as guardrails, that a new school board cannot go outside of. There are three things that the local school board will not have the authority to do. First, they will not have the authority to fire the superintendent. Secondly, they will not have the authority to reinstate the Little Rock Education Association as the negotiating entity for the teachers. And third, they will not have the authority to institute litigation against the state of Arkansas. And so, for instance, if there was a conflict between the local school board and the state over whether something should happen regarding education as a result of COVID, and the school board was frustrated with the state telling the local school board they couldn't do something, they could not go into court and litigate that. Okay, so those three guardrails are in place as long as the Little Rock School District is in what is known as Level 5 Support. That Level 5 Support determination is a determination that is based on standards that have been established by the Secretary of Education. And it is only the State Board of Education that can vote to say that the school district is no longer in Level 5 Support. Now, the criteria that will evaluate whether the district is in Level 5 Support has become more subjective recently, which I do think is good, and that it provides more flexibility. But for a period of time, those guardrails are going to be in place. And I understand very clearly the frustration that that brings with it. And so this is the election of a partially empowered school board. So there will be a lot of power, including the decision about budgets, the decision on whether to put out tax increases for a vote by the people, a variety of other very important things are going to be in the hands of the school board, but it's not going to be a fully empowered school board. So I'm glad to answer any questions later if there are questions about that, because it is a lot of education talk that is behind the scenes there. Now, the other very interesting thing that happened was that the State Board, in reconstituting the district, said that these school board elections would not be to return seven members to the school board, using the seven zones that were in place in 2015. Instead, the State Board of Education said there needs to be a nine-person board in the Little Rock School District. That was something that could be done as a result of some legislation, some legislation that was passed by the legislature a few years back. There are some that I think people have a lot of questions about why that step was taken. I think it's appropriate to ask some questions about that. There would be some that would say, well, it was to make it more likely that this would not be a majority-black school board, because the school board that was removed from authority in 2015 was historic, in that it was the first majority-black school board in the Little Rock School District. As you will see, when we look at the candidates for the school board, this will be a majority-black school board at a minimum. Because, so, if that was part of the plan, it didn't work. But we will have a majority-black school board in the Little Rock School District after this election. But that was interesting. The second thing that was decided was that that school, the school board vote, will take place with the November election. And this has been something that has been, there's been a lot of movement in this direction around the state. A lot of folks say, oh, school board elections need to take place with the November election so that there will be widespread participation. Some more cynical interpretations of that are that it is a way to limit the voice of those most active around school issues, including the Little Rock Education Association, which can have a good deal of power when school board elections are in times like September, when it used to be the case. So the State Board had the choice of whether, having these elections in March, when the primary election took place, or in November, they chose to place them in November, as has been the norm under the current Secretary of Education. Okay, so that's a little bit about how we got to where we are. Now, I want to, so, looks like, Stephanie, looks like I cannot share my screen.
Okay, let me see if I can give you some authority.
Awesome. Now the host, I've got power.
Now you've got it.
Okay, so, first question is, okay, who, let me get this up. Does that look all right? Can everybody see it?
Yes.
Okay, so, key question is, well, who I'm going to be voting on? Of course, these are going to be in nine zones, assuming everybody on this call is living in the Little Rock School District. You can vote in this election, you will vote in this election on November 3. If you go to the Little Rock School District website, lrsd.org, and go to Leadership, then you can come down, and the school board election zones are there. So you'll just click on that tab. That will then take you to this great map that really lays out the nine zones of the LRSD to be elected. They'll have quite a full screen there. The really cool thing is, you can go ahead and type in your address in the district, right there in the box, and it will pop up. After your address is in, it will take you exactly into a zone and really show where you are. That's my address. I'm over here in Zone 7, which is this blue zone in the eastern part of the city. So it's a very easy-to-use map, and so please let folks know about that, if they have questions about which zone they're in. And they understandably will, because the zone numbers have been changed. All right, so, key dates, and I think you've probably seen these, but I think these are important to reiterate as much as possible. October 5 coming up real soon, the last day to register to vote. Early voting is going to begin on October 19. The October 27 will be the last day to request an absentee ballot. I think you all know and have heard that if you are those that you care about, want to vote absentee, you need to go ahead and do that now. But October 27 is the absolute last day to request an absentee ballot. October 30, if you are registered in another county and need to transfer your registration, you need to do that by October 30. On November 2, which is the Monday before the election, is the last day to early vote, you can go to votepalaski.net. That's the Plaski County Election Commission website. That has all the early vote sites. Now, I believe on November 2, you can only early vote at the main county building across from City Hall. But all the vote sites and the early vote sites are there, along with all the other vote sites on Election Day, which is, of course, November 3. Now, this is a special case, because anyone running for the school board to win must get 50% of the vote plus one vote, a majority. And if they don't, if there are two finishers that neither of whom have gotten 50%, then there will be runoffs, and those runoffs will take place on November 24. And so be conscious of that, because I think a lot of people are not going to remember that. That is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. It's not exactly prime time for voting, but runoffs will take place. Okay, all right. And I do also want to note, and I'll put it in chat, there is a fantastic website out there on voting in Arkansas. It is, I'll put it up in just a second, it's called GovoteAR, G-O-V-O-T-E-A-R.org, but I'll stick it in the chat box when I get access to that. And there are great videos there about how to absentee vote. All the dates are there. Please share that website, because I think it's some of the best information about how to do the voting process, including some of the things that folks are asking this year, because so many folks are voting absentee. Okay, all right. So Stephanie did all these snazzy graphics, but these are the Little Rock School District school board candidates. And we already know of three of the members. Three of the members have been, were the only folks to sign up to run. And so these three, so we know three of the folks who will be on the school board. These first two, Michael Mason in Zone 1, and Sandrickia Mourning in Zone 2, they are now actually current members of the community advisory board. Okay, and Mr. Mason has been on the community advisory board for a good while now. Ms. Mourning, she has just been appointed, in fact, I think she'll maybe just in the last few weeks, to the cab. So they're on board. Okay, now we get some larger fields. Zone 3, which is, if you go to the map, you'll see it's kind of around the park, it's a little kind of midtown, I'm not sure the exact borders of that, but this is Zone 3. You see, there are four candidates, three of them are pictured here. I will, you know, I'm not going to go through all the bios of the candidates. There are going to be, of course, a lot of news stories on them, and there will be other forums which will allow folks to have a voice. And I'd really encourage you to pay attention to which zone number you're in, and then follow these candidates. Many of them have Facebook pages or websites that allow you to get a little bit of understanding of who they are, what their backgrounds are, etc. So that's Zone 3. In Zone 4, Leann Wilson has been very active in schools. She's a social worker. She's Zone 4, and she will be elected. There is a competitive race in Zone 5, two candidates there, that's kind of Hillcrest Heights, and a little bit south of I-630, down around Stevens Elementary. So that is Zone 5. Zone 6, has a large number of candidates. This is a zone where there are some questions about the eligibility of one or two of the candidates, and so there could be some action there related to whose votes will actually be counted. But these are the four candidates who are, at the moment, on the ballot. Three of them are pictured there. Lou Jackson is not pictured. Zone 7 is the eastern part of the city. Norma Johnson, she was a member of the Little Rock School Board, not when the board was disestablished, but Ms. Springer had actually beaten Norma Johnson just before that. So she is a veteran, Ryan Davis, who ran for State Representative. All roads lead here in this case. She's running against both of these people. The Zone 8, Greg Adams, who was president of the school board when the school board was removed, he is running against Benjamin Coleman Jr. for kind of a midtown district that kind of runs south to north. Then we go to Zone 9, it's the westernmost district. King B. Vangdings, she's a research scientist. Jeff Wood is the current Chair of the Community Advisory Board. Okay, and so those are the candidates for the school board. I think some of us were maybe a little surprised that more people did not file, but obviously, this is not a normal year, and COVID, unquestionably, was a distraction and a disruption to capturing signatures that are required and other things. Okay, all right. Now, you can go to voterview AR nova.org. You can see your sample ballot there. You can also get there through the Plaski County Election Commission site that I had up earlier, votepalaski.net. Both of those will get you to your sample ballot. You're not going to be able to see this, but this is a sample ballot. And I want to note a couple of things. The school board elections will kind of be towards the end of the ballot. There is actually a second page of the ballot where all the state constitutional amendments are on it. But the school board, the election itself, will be down towards the end of the ballot. And really importantly, not only will everybody be voting on school board candidates, there will also be consideration of the school tax on every ballot. And importantly, this millage vote is not a simple extension of what is currently in place. Instead, this also includes an extension of debt service for 12.4 mills of tax, okay? And this would produce, this would allow the district to go out and, of course, finance of projects. And these include several school facilities, the construction of an entirely new building on the site of the McClellan High School campus. And that would be a K through 8 campus, and that would pull in the students who are currently at Cloverdale, and then students who are at some of the elementary schools in Southwest would be brought into that new facility. It would also provide some monies to do some repairs at three old buildings in the district, Dunbar, Central, and Hall. So that is what that 12.4 mills of existing debt service would do. Now, this has been placed on the ballot, although the cab did vote to endorse its being placed on the ballot. The current school board, who is, of course, the Commissioner of Education, Johnny Key, he made the decision to place this on the ballot. There, of course, are concerned, there are some who feel that an elected school board should have taken this action. But it is here, rightfully on the ballot, and the voters of the district will decide whether to vote for the tax or against the tax. If they vote against the tax, then the 34 mills that are permanently in place, those will stay in place, but this would have an impact on that existing debt service. If it does pass, it would not raise anyone's taxes, it would be a continuation of current taxes. And just to let you know what the taxes are, obviously, for everyone, the property tax is different, but if you had a $200,000 home, the annual tax, just from that 12.4 mills, would be just under $500 a year. So just to let you know kind of the ramifications of that at the individual level. But that will probably get some attention in the closing weeks, and so just to let you know, that is also on the ballot this year. Okay, now, I'll be glad to answer any questions on the election. I do want to say a few things, though, about after the election, because after this school board is trained, these folks who have been elected either on November 3 or November 24, after they're elected, they'll go into, they'll gain office, they will become the governance body for the district, aside from those three areas where they can't act. But, you know, I think we all recognize that it's crucially important that every citizen remain engaged with the school district. It is vitally important in so many ways to the present and the future of not just the district, the students in the district, but our city as a whole. And so I think it's really important for us to think about how we can be productive citizens. There, I think, you know, there are a variety of ways in which we can do that, of course, showing up to meetings, commenting on the actions that are being considered by the school board, whether it's individually to our school board member or by making public comment at those meetings. Ultimately, it may be that you decide to run for the school board yourself down the line, not this year, but in the future. And there's a publication that I think is cool, and I did write it, but that's not why I think it's cool. There's a publication called Helping Your Child Succeed in School, and it is a guide for parents. It's written for rank-and-file audience. It doesn't have much education ease in it. It's a very clear document, and it's available on the Arkansas Advocates website, or advocates.org, if you go on their publications. And it really looks at how you can help your child, really, from your house, in terms of how you can be a good advocate in the home, in terms of aiding your student with homework and other things. But moreover, outside of the home, how you can be an advocate in the community for education, both at the school board level, but also, of course, with the state legislature, which has tremendous influence over funding and a variety of other things and other policies that have real ramifications for the operation of the school district. And so take a look at that publication. It's a few years old now, but most of the data, most of the information is still pretty good, and I think includes some important tools that rank-and-file parents can use so that they can really be effective advocates for students. So I will stop there, and let's see, how do I stop sharing, stopping my share? All right, now I can see all of y'all's, many of y'all's faces. So glad to open up the conversation.
Well, thank you so much, Dr. Barth, and what you have provided to us thus far has been very informative. And we have already placed those URLs in the chat, so if you did not get them earlier, please see those in the chat. Just want to make sure everybody is aware of that. So if we
And I added the GovoteAR as well.
Oh, yeah, I see it now. Thank you. So we've gotten plenty of thanks already from several of our attendees tonight. Does anyone have any questions? And if you didn't have a question that you thought of during Dr. Barth's presentation, we wanted you to use the chat, but please feel free now, if you want to unmute, to ask a question. We'd love to hear if there are any questions. And I've got a question, Dr. Barth. So as we get ready to start this year, what are some of the things that we know that the school board, some of those issues that they might be likely to take up?
Yeah, I think there are several things that Yeah, I think there are several things that and and Dr. can also kind of speak to this as well, obviously. The 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 cab is taking a look at the beginning, the process of looking at the budget right now. So that will be in place, but but always there are potential adjustments to the budget, and that's important. There are a variety of personnel policies that the 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 Personnel Policy Committee, which is now kind of the representative of of the of the teachers and other staff, may put forward for consideration by by the school board. There are all kinds of contracting issues in terms of who who will be given or carry out key key actions by the district. I think this is going to be obviously a very interesting time to come onto the school board because we will see the transition into the spring semester. And the school board is going to have some voice in how does the district continue to respond to COVID? What what does education really look like? What are the options that are available to students? We know what has been the case this fall, but the the school board will have, I think, important voice there. This is, I think we all know, a school year like no other. And so there's going to be a lot of authority over over the just the basic operation of school in in the spring. And then while while the 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 board won't have the power to to fire the superintendent, there is still some other ability to evaluate the superintendent's performance and and by extension, the performance of the entire entire leadership. There are all kinds of responsibilities that the school board has related to personnel hearings when when there are decisions to be made about the potential sanctioning of of employees and appeals of decisions that have already been made that have that impact employees. And 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 then I think things like, you mentioned my work on the community school model. That's a partnership between the district and the city. And obviously, it is crucially important that the district feel good about that partnership. And the the school board will be the voice of the district on on matters like that. I do think this is going to be, in addition to those potential actions, I think this is just going to be a very interesting moment because I think, let's imagine any of us who who get placed on a board with eight other people that we don't really know in many cases. And we don't really know the people that we're working with in the form of the superintendent. There's going to be a lot of a key period of really building bonds in in that body. And it's really important, I think, that that this board get it right in terms of those interpersonal relationships that that are going to either work or not work. You know, normally, you might have a couple of new members, maximum, who would come onto a board. But there would be a lot of things that are kind of already established. There would be leaders that are kind of already in place. Now they're going to have to figure out who the leaders are. Who's who's who is who's who's the right person to really be, who can run a meeting and who can't? Because those are not universally gained skills. It's going to be a fascinating time to watch this body learn about each other and then really take on this very new task for many of them. Some of them may have had previous experiences on bodies like this, or maybe even on the La Rock School Board. But this is going to be a lot of lot of learning very quickly at a very important time for education.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Cassandra. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
In listening to your the information that you've shared, where you talked about the level five support, where the Secretary of Education sets the standards and the board will only have partial power. I I'm very concerned about trust among the state and the community. Trust has been broken. And I believe that it's necessary for us to take a look at transparent opportunities to build those relationships that you were talking about in your conversation about bonds. I I call them relationships because to me, it's it's a it's it's both sides working together and being honest and open so that we can move forward. I don't believe that we're going to move forward until the truth of why the school board was dismissed in 2015 and why we only have partial power. But you want us to vote to give you additional money with no power. I'm very, very concerned that those issues are a reality going forward so that we can improve our circumstances and not deter them.
And I completely, I completely agree with you, Ms. McGee. I think that, you know, obviously, I spent a lot of my time on the State Board of Education trying to get control back. I wasn't successful, and that was a real source of frustration. I I do think that there is a an opportunity to to get full power back pretty pretty quickly. I hope that is the case. I I am, I think we have a choice as a community about whether we whether we spend our energy on the past, as frustrating as that past has been, or or do we spend energy on building a better and brighter future? But I totally agree that it is vital, it is crucial that there be full power for the school board and and full voice for this community in this in this process. I totally agree. I think what we, I think, but I do think that sadly and frustratingly, this community does not have complete, it is really in the hands of of others about whether that is the case or not. That is in the hands of the 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 State Department of Education and the the school board, the State State Board of Education. That's where the power is of the governor, obviously, who appointed all members of this of the state board has a great deal of voice there. And therefore, we just have to do our best to, I think, show everybody that we are ready to to govern. I have no doubt about that, but it is going to be, we are going to be very reliant upon these nine people that they show tangible evidence of their ability to work together. I think that will be important in terms of whether those guardrails are removed. And it's going to be very tough. You talk about building relationships. I've I've been a, you know, I was a member of the State Board of Education. Others of you have been on elected boards in Arkansas. You can't really build the kind of bonds that you can build in a in a private group because you can, you know, in a private group, you can, you know, you have those frank conversations in public, you know, between yourselves. You can get to know each other as people. But, you know, because of the open meetings laws in Arkansas, you know, whenever two of those folks are together, they're acting as public officials, and so they have to be on guard. And they their actions become subject to scrutiny by others. And so if, in a perfect world, I think, once these nine people are elected, they would go off and spend a week together and get to know each other, right? But but under open meetings laws, that's where we really can't do that. So I I I hear you. I I totally agree with you. I think it's going to be very challenging. And we are, we're, we're really, I think we've all got to hope that that this group of nine gets it right. And as a community, we've got to do what we can to help those nine get it right for the future of our our district and our community.
Thank you, Dr. Barth.
Thank you.
Hey, I have a question.
Yes, Representative.
Hi, Dr. Barth. Can you, I got on a call when you were explaining the millage. Can you explain that again quickly?
Yeah, just real quick. Yeah. So folks, everybody will be voting not on their school board member, but they will also be voting on on the millage, as happens every time there's a every year of a school election. But this millage is a little bit different in that it also includes going ahead and moving forward with extending the the debt of twelve point four mills, which would allow the district to go out and basically finance a number of of projects, including the new school buildings and improvements to existing buildings. And so that is, that is a portion of this vote. So it's not just kind of, it's not a status quo vote on the on the millage. It also does extend the debt for thirty years, which allows, of course, some of those actions to be taken. And and that is, I think, a controversial thing. And I think that they'll probably be debated in the next seven, seven weeks about whether that's appropriate or not. It's a vote that is very similar. Y'all y'all may remember a vote that was taken on in a special election yes, two years ago, that 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 went down very soundly. It was defeated. It's pretty much exactly the same, the same same vote. I guess it was actually three years ago now, but y'all remember that special election. And this is pretty much that same, that's that same type of vote. The specifics are just a little bit different, but it's pretty much the same action. Denise, does that help?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And Representative Enid, thank you for joining us this evening.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Thank you all so much for having me.
Made it easy for them. They had all the information. They didn't know what to ask.
As as always, if you ever need anything from me, jbarth@larock.gov. Glad to answer, you know, anything, any questions you have, any comments you have. And 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 always looking for ways in which you can be a partner in 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 this endeavor of of making a better La Rock School District because because that's what it's all about. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Katrina, did you have any final words?
Well, I just want to thank, thank you, Dr. Barth, for joining us on this evening to share more about the 2020 election of the La Rock School Board. I also want to thank Dr. Jeremy Owa, who serves as Deputy Superintendent of Academics and School Leadership, for joining us on this evening. So he was on the call. For our members and guests, you can find more information about the election and candidates on our website, betapieomega.com. I believe Mrs. Jackson has already recognized that Representative Denise Enid, but thank you so much for joining us. And there is also a candidate running for office joining us on this evening, Ashley Hudson, who is running for state representative. So thank you for joining as well. Just want to remind you of some important dates. Okay, we know that this is the election season, and we remember all kinds of dates. We remember birthdays. We remember weddings and anniversaries. But let's remember the dates to vote. Okay? And so October fifth is the last day to register to vote. October nineteenth, early voting begins. We all know that there may be some issues with voting. You want to make sure that you, you know, get your absentee ballot, if that's what you need, or early vote. You do not have to wait until the day of to vote. This is one election that we do not want to procrastinate. October twenty seventh is the last day to request your absentee ballot. October thirtieth is the last day to transfer registration from one county to another. And November second is the last day to early vote. And that date, you will have to vote at the Plasky County Regional Building. November third is election day. And so please remember all of these dates and share them with your family, your friends, people in the community, your neighbors. It is very important. I would also like to thank Stephanie Jackson, Pat Person, and the Connection Committee for creating this space for us to discuss such an important issue. And to you, members of the community, for joining us. All of us know of a child, we know a parent, we know a family, an educator, a staff member, an administrator, or even a volunteer in the La Rock School District. And so it will take all of us participating in the election process and holding those elected accountable. So please remember that elections matter and they have consequences. Thank you again for joining us and have a good evening.
Madam President.
Yes.
This is Joyce Springer. I am also running for office for State Representative, District Thirty Four. And if there are any persons on the call this evening that live in District Thirty Four, I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for joining us and have a good evening.